...of the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Lavalette from Monday, January 4th, 2021 will come to order. Please read the meeting notice statement. I'm going to again read the standard Zoom comments. We are trying something new at this meeting. We've determined that if we try to feed our mics directly into the amplifier and then directly into the Zoom feed, the sound is supposed to be better. Matt had it tested and it seems to be working, but we are expecting live comments during the meeting to be posted. So during the public comment parts of the meeting, if you'd like to speak, please click the raise hand button and we will be notified of your request to talk. The mayor will recognize you and your microphone will be unmuted to allow you to speak. Once you have completed speaking, your mic will be remuted. For security reasons, we cannot recognize anyone who is listed as anonymous or a phone number that is not identified. When you are recognized and unmuted, you must first state your name and address before saying any comments or asking any questions. Failure to do so may result in you being muted and/or disconnected. On computers, the raise hand button can be found in the webinar control section typically at the bottom of your screen. If you raise your hand by accident, please feel free to lower your hand. If you are only drawing by dialing in, you can simply dial star nine and toggle between raise hand and lower hand. On mobile devices, the raise hand and lower hand buttons are typically found in the lower left corner of the screen. The meeting will also be livestreamed on YouTube. There is roughly a 20-second delay in the process. YouTube chat will no longer be used for public commenting. At this time on the agenda, it calls for an invocation from Reverend Todd Condel of the Union Church. Obviously, he is not with us today, so we are going to waive that one. So at this point, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence. We did have a local resident by the name of Sam G. M. Petro from Guyer Avenue who passed away. After the moment of silence, I will ask Councilman Lamb to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the name of the Constitution of America, the Constitution of all.
The next order of business is to swear in the new council members, Anita Zalome and Dave Fenter. Dave, how many terms you doing?
This will be your fourth.
This will be your fourth, and Anita amazingly.
Eleven.
Eleven terms. Okay, we're going to do this out front. Place your left hands on the Bible, raise your right hand, and your feet have to be high.
High.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of New Jersey.
But I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear pure faith and allegiance.
To the same and the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this, under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Councilmember Carl Bobble, Councilmember Herb Bobble, according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
A few words, do you want to say a few words first?
You may say a few words.
Okay, just want to say a few words. I threw away my 10-page speech, but this is just a few things I'd like to share with you. First, I want to thank you, Wally, for swearing me in, and thank you so much.
Get closer to the microphone if you don't mind, Anita, pull it in.
And I want to thank all of you for your congratulations. As I begin my 11th term and my 31st year serving the Borough of Lavalette, you can probably guess I have enjoyed every minute. I fell in love with Lavalette as a child, visiting my family who lived here already. I loved the summers, and then first chance I got, I bought a home, changed jobs so my family would have the chance to grow up in paradise. I served on the Board of Education and then moved over to the council. I have been up here with so many elected officials, but I have to say this group stands out. This group stands out. We have great workers in our town, we have great volunteers, and I'm so proud to be up with this group. We don't always agree right away, but we manage to work on issues, and we decide what's best for our borough, for our residents, and our visitors. We discuss things, we consult, and in the end, we do what's best for all. We have learned to compromise and really work together. A great idea for government everywhere. I hope everybody hears that. So I'm here again for whatever I can do to continue to make and keep this island paradise the best, and I thank you all very much.
Thank you, Anita Wellsen, and we appreciate working with you as well. Dave, any comments?
I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank all the residents for their support. I want to thank the council for their support and everything we try to do, and hopefully the next three years we'll accomplish a lot more and help everybody out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, and congratulations again. Okay, please call the roll.
Here.
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 Oh, you were? I'm sorry, Bob. I'm sorry, Bob.
Let's do it again.
All right. We'll do it again.
You said the Pledge of Allegiance.
That's great. Thank you for holding on.
All right. Time now for the mayor's annual message. We had a very interesting year in 2020, obviously dominated by COVID-19 and the consequences of that pandemic, but in spite of that, we are still able to accomplish quite a bit here. I did have Mr. Bryce try to summarize, and it turned out to be nearly a phone book, but we've cut it down to just a couple of pages of things that we got accomplished. And first and foremost was being able to operate under the constraints of the COVID pandemic. We were able to institute policies and procedures for cleansing. For the most part, we've been able to maintain public services. We've had some interruptions, building department, the police department last month was severely understaffed because of it. In spite of that, building department numbers are still near record-breaking. Beach badge sales were record-breaking. So overall, somehow, we managed to pull off a good year. What did we get accomplished? Well, we replaced that old bulkhead on the bayfront. It was near collapse before we finally got the cash to do the repairs, and following that, we got the dredging done. That took a while because we needed to find alternate sources of revenue to do the dredging, and we did accomplish that by striking the deal with the DOT to trade off some of that dredge material for the services of dredging, the deeper parts of the channel. That worked out very well. We also completed road improvements to New York Avenue as part of the annual road enhancement program. That included paving as well as some curving there. We finally got our general permits and our individual permits for the beach. We were a couple of years without those. DEP allowed us to operate anyway, but they expired after Sandy, and we couldn't get them until we knew what the condition of the beach would be after Sandy, and it took a little while and a little bit of negotiation to get that right. Beach revenues, 1.25 million. You're all right?
Yep. Sorry.
And obviously, we did everything we could to keep our local businesses functioning as best they could with the hopes that they'll survive this pandemic. Created ordinances for the restaurants to be able to function, and that worked out pretty well as well. DPW did a lot of work, Bob, appreciate that. Pavilion reconstruction on Reese Avenue, all-new bayfront moorings for the kayaks and the sailboats. The benches were installed on our dunes along with the plaques. They transported the dredge material that we had the county take out of the bridge area, put that down on the bayfront. New shed at the tennis courts, some Matrix installed up on President Avenue to keep Miss Anita happy. Hankins Park was renovated. Lot going on down there. They did a great job as usual. We did well four rehab. We'll be looking at well three this year, unfortunately. So overall, it was a pretty busy year in spite of all the things that we had to face with the Corona. What are we looking at for 2021 here? We've got that jetty project as kind of phase three of that bayfront. We're in the process of awarding engineering. Maybe we're doing that tonight, and hopefully we'll get that reef out there by the summer so that we won't encounter additional shoaling over this year. Anita's going to continue to push for enhanced access on the beach, looking for money for some more Matrix. As I said, we have that well three project. We did well four last year, and this one hopefully won't be as big a project, but it needs to be done. Our water consumption was up by several million gallons last year, and we need that water come summertime because people, a lot more people here with bigger homes, more bathrooms, using more water. DPW actual plant down there is scheduled for some rehabilitation work. We put some money away last year for that, so we're going to try to make that look a little bit better down there. Pickleball, we're going to try to do the best that we can to find some money for the pickleball courts and get them in shape so that they're no longer a safety hazard for the users. What are the challenges that we're facing? We've got 5G application here again. We've got quite a bit of the public anxious to be heard in resistance to that. I did get a call today from Seaside Park. They're facing the same kind of an application down there. It's spreading. So, you know, the last two years that we've been battling them, we've kind of been the tip of the spear, but they've spread their attack out to most of the surrounding communities. I had hoped that that would happen a little quicker so that we had more troops to fight them with, but it's finally happening now, so we'll see. But again, we are still at the forefront. Well, the application process is further along here in Lavalette than it is in the other communities, so how we handle it is really going to set the example for the rest of the towns. All right. Any comments from council on your achievements in 2020 and what you're looking to do in '21? Dave? Jim?
I'll save it right now.
Very good. Joanne?
I'm okay.
Bob?
I think you covered it.
Anita?
I think you covered it.
All right, very good. Then we're going to move on to appointments. Actually, we have election of the Borough Council President for the year 2021. Anyone want to make a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Dave?
I'll second it. Doesn't matter.
Second from Joanne. Can I have a roll call on that, please?
Captain Borowski?
Most assuredly, yes.
Captain Philphone?
Yes.
Captain President Salem?
I guess I better abstain.
Captain Staudtill?
Yes.
Captain Fenter?
Yes.
Captain Lamb?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I enjoy being president of the council. I enjoy doing the wonderful weddings and whatever extra I can do. Thank you.
All right, that motion is approved. Now we have borough appointments by the mayor that do not require council approval. Planning board, one-year term, Class 1 member, the mayor's designee is George Shannon Wolf. One-year, Class 2 member, Robert Bryce. Are we going to remove that Class 3 member?
Yes.
Or just, it needs council approval, so we'll do that one right now, might as well, otherwise I'm going to get confused and miss it. So the Class 3 member, I've selected Joanne Philphone, but apparently at the advice of council, it requires council approval, so I would ask for a motion on that.
Go in.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Captain Borowski?
Yes.
Captain President Salem?
Yes.
Captain Staudtill?
Yes.
Captain Fenter?
Yes.
That motion is approved. The four-year Class 4 member is Thomas Restano, and the two-year alternate member number two is Alex Barletta. Oh, you know what? Now we have it on the agenda. You had it in both places. I'm sorry about that. So I should have done it now, but it's done, so we're good. All right. Council assignments. The council assignments are the same as they were for last year. Anybody can check them on the Borough website. I don't think that we need to go through them tonight at the meet. 2021 Borough appointments by the mayor that require advice and consent of the council. Borough attorney, Eric M. Bernstein and Associates. Borough auditor, Robert S. Alawa, Alawa and Company. Borough prosecutor, Bonnie Peterson.
They have to be.
Individually, okay.
I'm moving.
All right. Oh, council assignments, they do. Can I have a motion on the council assignments?
I'll move it, Mayor.
Roll call, please.
Captain Borowski?
Yes.
Captain Philphone?
Yes.
Captain President Salem?
Yes.
Captain Staudtill?
Yes.
Captain Fenter?
Yes.
Captain Lamb?
That motion is approved. Borough council, again this year, Eric M. Bernstein and Associates. I think he's been with us for 15 years at this point.
I'll make that motion there.
A roll call, please.
Captain Borowski?
Yes.
Captain Philphone?
Yes.
Captain President Salem?
Yes.
Captain Staudtill?
Yes.
Captain Fenter?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Borough auditor, again, a repeat, Robert S. Alawa, Alawa and Company's been doing a fantastic job.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Captain Borowski?
Yes.
Captain Philphone?
Yes.
Captain President Salem?
Yes.
Captain Staudtill?
Yes.
Captain Fenter?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Borough prosecutor, Bonnie Peterson?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Captain Borowski?
Yes.
Captain Philphone?
Yes.
Captain President Salem?
Yes.
Captain Staudtill?
Yes.
Captain Fenter?
Yes.
Captain Lamb?
Yes.
That motion is approved. The next batch of appointments apparently can be done.
No, seven and eight have to be separate, and then to go to nine is good.
Seven and eight are, mine are not numbered.
Seven is the various appointments.
Yes. I can do them as a group?
No. That has to be separate.
Each one of them has to be separate.
And then eight has to be separate, and then once nine, oh, nine is the group.
Eight must be various.
I'm still confused.
Advisory. Eight is advisory.
I have various professionals all in one group, and there's no numbers.
Various professionals, but that resolution, yes, you could read them all together, but they have to vote on that resolution by itself.
Each one has to be separate?
No.
No.
They can be grouped. Okay, so various professional appointments, Bond Council, Gluck, Walrep, LLP. Planning Board Attorney, Terry Brady. Conflict Alternate Prosecutor, David Casadante. Public Defender, Marjorie Hurley. Conflict Alternate Public Defender, Anthony Pagano. I could take a motion on the entire group.
Yep.
So moved.
And a roll call.
Captain Borowski?
Yes.
Captain Philphone?
Yes.
Captain President Salem?
Yes.
Captain Staudtill?
Yes.
Captain Fenter?
Yes.
Captain Lamb?
Yes.
That motion is approved as well. Various advisory committees are next.
And they are, you could do those all together.
All together and a motion at the end of those? All right, so we have Mayor and Council Advisory Committee, Anthony Gallo. CDBG Tourism Grants Committee, Anita Zalome Liaison, Elaine Chardine, Joseph Polinsky, Patricia Hoffman. Municipal Utilities Advisory Committee, Dave Fenter Liaison, Jim Borowski Liaison. Alda Benedictus, Joseph Polinsky, Glenn Mazzarano. Ordinance Committee, Joanne Philphone Liaison, David Fenter Liaison. Member Sheila Sharkey, Martin Morales, Audrey Zalinski, Mark Speaker, Patricia Maroney, Teresa Coleman, Nick Zacharia, Georgia Calderaro. Recreation Committee, Anita Zalome Liaison, Michael Staudtill Liaison, Lem Calderara, Georgia Calderara, Chief Colin Grant, Teresa Coleman, Joyce Hornung, Rosalie Dolanay, Audrey Zalinski, Bart Coleman, Sergeant Adam LaCicero, Harriet Sheridan, Bruno Hornung, Patricia Maroney, Dr. Jim Enright. Did I miss Pat Hoffman?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. And Pat Hoffman. Beautification Committee, Anita Zalome Liaison, Joanne Philphone Liaison, Patricia Maroney, Teresa Coleman, Joyce Hornung, Rich Traverso, Arlene Maglianico, Bruno Hornung, Anne Schneider. Environmental Protection Advisory Committee, Anita Zalome Liaison, Dave Fenter Liaison. Mark Speaker Chairman, Patricia Hoffman, Barbara Sissino, Donna Franzoso, Mark Vertakos. Goose Patrol Committee, Joanne LaCicero President, Susan Koch, Gary Norman, Glenn Mazzarano. Memorabilia Advisory Committee, Joanne Philphone Chair, Anita Zalome, Patricia Maroney, Mary Jo Austin, Brian Bavasso, Harry Dues. Business and Tourism Committee, Mark Speaker is the chairman.
I'll make a motion.
I need a motion.
Sorry.
And a roll call on that, please.
Captain Borowski?
Yes.
Captain Philphone?
Yes.
Captain President Salem?
Yes.
Captain Staudtill?
Yes.
Captain Fenter?
Yes.
Captain Lamb?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Resolutions on consent, I will read by number, excepting council comments on the three pages, and then we'll take a motion, second, and a roll call at the end. Number 09, increasing the minimum hourly wage rate from $11 to $12 an hour effective January 1st, 2020, as required by New Jersey state law. Number 10, authorizing execution of Schedule C agreement with the County of motion for one year, 2021. Number 11, designating official newspapers. Number 12, authorizing officials to sign checks, disperse funds, checks, and drafts. 13, appointing an Internal Affairs Officer to the Lavalette Police Department. 14, establishing 2021 petty cash funds. 15, designating official depositories. 16, adopting rules for the mayor and council. 17, fixing rate of interest to be charged on delinquent taxes or assessments. 18, authorizing the CFO to make certain timely payments for specific monetary obligations. 19, establishing a calendar of 2021 council meetings. 20, establishing the allocation of salaries of certain employees within the borough. 21, temporary budget. 22, reaffirming cash management plan. 23, adopting federal guidelines for mileage reimbursement for public officials. 24, authorizing participation in the State of New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Program. 25, approving appointment of Robert Bryce as Ocean County Jif Mel Fund Commissioner and Donale Amico as the alternate fund commissioner. 26, establishing the allocation of funds received from the state's drunk driving enforcement fund and authorizing the mayor to sign the quarterly DWI reports. 27, establishing change fund. 28, endorsing submission of the year 2021 recycling tonnage grant application. 29, authorizing software contract with Edmunds and Associates for $10,930. Number 30, authorization to approve seasonal appointments prior to meeting confirmation. 31, designating public agency compliance officer in accordance with NJAC 17:27-3.5, which is Robert Price, the Borough Administrator. Number 32, authorizing the tax assessor to act as agent for Lavalette and file appeals for tax year 2021. 33, approving contracts for the C2 license with Ted Golubowski. Number 34, approving contract for T2 and W2 licenses with Charles Farratt. 35, approving the appointment of Public Power Association of New Jersey Representatives, Councilman Jim Borowski and Dave Fenter as the alternate. Number 36, approving appointment of emergency management team for 2021. 37, approving appointments of members to the Lavalette Emergency Planning Committee. 38, approving appointments within the Lavalette Police Department for 2021, including special police, Class 1 and 2, crossing guards, part-time dispatchers, and matrons. Number 39, approving appointments of ADA Coordinator, Councilmember Anita F. Zalome, Deputy ADA Coordinator Elaine Chardine, and members of the Lavalette Community Partners for People with Disabilities for 2021. 40, approving appointment of Ted Golubowski as Lavalette Safety Coordinator. 41, appointing Meridian Occupational Health as municipal physicians for the Borough of Lavalette. 42, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Commerce, Risk Control Services, and Dynamic Testing Services to provide services related to an alcohol and substance program for all CDL drivers. 43, appointing Laurie Staudtill as the 2021 Right to Know Coordinator. 44, authorizing the appointment of Phoenix Advisors for the Continuing Disclosure Agent Services and Independent Registered Municipal Advisor for the year 2021. 45, appointing Ted Golubowski as Clean Communities Coordinator for the Borough. 46, appointing Barbara McAtier as part-time Deputy Court Administrator and part-time municipal court recorder. 47, authorizing the mayor and municipal clerk to sign and execute the 2021 Ocean County Cultural Arts Grant Agreement in amount of $1,500 for our summer concert series. 48, approving the Ocean County Animal Facilities fee scheduled for 2021. 49, authorizing the mayor to sign and execute an agreement with Preferred Behavioral Health for the Employee Assistance Program. 50, awarding a contract to Stockton University Coastal Research Center for the preparation of required permit applications to submit to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the DEP for a living reef concept to protect the area near the boat ramp and the West Point Allen Bridge in amount of $17,400. 51, approving the proposal from Alda Stanton and Associates for engineering services for the Brynmore Avenue Road Improvement Project Phase 2 in amount of $43,600. 52, authorizing the shared services agreement with the Borough of Manaluking for the use of our courtroom facilities for the term of two years effective January 1st. Any comments from council on any of those?
I want to.
Nine, 27. 27, the change funds?
Yes.
Okay. And 43. Okay. All right, so a motion.
I wanted, I just want to make a comment. I want to thank Donale for all her work she does with the, we picked up that Ocean County Cultural Arts Grant. We almost doubled it from last year, which is a big help.
She has some good concerts then.
Yes, we do. We always have good concerts no matter what, but yes, that was, that was almost doubled.
Good. All right, so the consent agenda minus number nine, number 27, and number 43. I'll need a motion on that.
So moved. Second.
A roll call, please.
Captain Borowski?
Yes.
Captain Philphone?
Yes.
Captain President Salem?
Yes.
Captain Staudtill?
Yes.
Captain Fenter?
Yes.
Captain Lamb?
Yes.
And that motion is approved. Number 54 is 2021 bills list, the amount of $1,49,455.3. Roll call, please.
Captain Borowski?
Yes.
Captain Philphone?
Yes.
Captain President Salem?
Yes.
Captain Staudtill?
Yes.
Captain Fenter?
Yes.
Captain Lamb?
Yes.
And that motion is approved. Off consent, we have number nine, which is increasing the minimum hourly wage rate from $11 to $12 effective January 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Captain Borowski?
Yes.
Captain Philphone?
Yes.
Captain President Salem?
Yes.
Captain Staudtill?
Abstain.
Captain Fenter?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Captain Brownkey?
Yes.
Captain Philippione?
Yes.
Captain Preston Daley?
Yes.
Captain Staudgill?
Resting.
Captain Finter?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Number twenty-seven, establishing change funds.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Captain Brownkey?
Yes.
Captain Philippione?
Yes.
Captain Preston Daley?
Yes.
Captain Staudgill?
Resting.
Captain Finter?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Number forty-three, appointing Laurie Staudgill as the 2021 Right to Know Coordinator. Roll call, please.
Captain Brownkey?
Yes.
Captain Philippione?
Yes.
Captain Preston Daley?
Yes.
Captain Staudgill? Captain Finter?
Yes.
Captain Lamb?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Other items off consent. We have the remainder of the bills list from 2020, I would assume. It's number fifty-three, the amount of $199,973.90.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Captain Brownkey?
Yes.
Captain Philippione?
Yes.
Captain Preston Daley?
Yes.
Captain Staudgill? Captain Finter?
Yes.
Captain Lamb?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Number fifty-four is 2021 bills list, the amount of $1,049,455.3.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Captain Brownkey?
Yes.
Captain Philippione?
Yes.
Captain Preston Daley?
Yes.
Captain Staudgill?
Yeah.
Captain Finter?
Yes.
Captain Lamb?
Yeah.
Motion is approved. First public hearing on CDBG 2021 grant application. Anita.
Yes, well, we're very fortunate. Last year, we asked for the benches, and we did get the thirty-two, and then they called me up and said, Anita, there's 10,000 extra another town is not using. So we got that extra 10,000. We were able to get the Matrix to make it easier for wheelchairs and older people or whatever to get to the beach. We got the one Matrix. Actually, they gave us ten. It was then the other was donated by Beach Days for All, a wonderful organization, so that we have the Matrix there, which is great. And this year, we only go every other year. Now, when I started this 30 years ago, we only could go for handicapped things. It had to be handicapped, a playground, whatever. It had to be that. So I did that for quite a few years. And then they moved us over to a DTN, which is Designated Target Neighborhood. And when you have that in your town, which is a little poorer than the other sections, when you have that in your town, you can go for anything for a grant. So we were on that for a couple of years. And we did use it for bathrooms, whatever we needed. Whatever we needed, it doesn't have to be for the handicap. So now this year, it's another year for us to go for this grant. And normally, it's between $30,000 and $50,000, whatever, which is what we got last year. So I asked about what we could fund. I was kind of, I didn't know. You know, I know we have that wonderful Matrix, and we could use a nice path, something to cover that path, a mat. I know every town has them. I called up Teddy. I talked to Teddy about it. And Teddy has two friends that work as Public Works in Seaside Park and Seaside Heights, and it seems to work well. And Dave worked very hard with Ted to make sure sand couldn't blow up into the President Avenue ramp so that it would block whatever's there. You couldn't walk, no matter if it was a Mobi mat or just plain. So they're working on that. And the Mobi mat is expensive because it's a long, long path. The ADA ramps are the longest. And that ramp is $50,000 to cover that ramp completely from the boardwalk all the way down to the Matrix. So I would like to ask for 50,000. I don't know that we'll get it right away, but I would like to ask for $50,000 for that. And I think it would be a good thing to work in this town. And one thing I wanted to mention to you, too, is that Brett Gray, who is the manager of Mobi mats, came, spoke with me, spoke with Ted, spoke with Bob Rice. And if we buy this in the next couple of weeks, they can give us the 2020 prices rather than the 2021 prices. So we might want to think about that. And I'll have to talk to Krista and Bob and see if there's enough money to put a down payment on it and then purchase it. But we have a hearing now and then see whatever anybody wants to say about that. Then we have another hearing in January. And because February, the application is due. And I did talk to our engineer, Chuck Applegate, and he's ready to fill out the whole application. And so I think we have a good chance of getting this grant.
Okay, this part of the hearing is strictly amongst council members.
Yes.
Not the public at this point. So are there any objections to Anita's plan or additional requests or further recommendations for something different through the ADA grant?
Is the expectation that the grants will cover the entire cost there?
Well, hopefully, it'll cover almost entirely. Now, we got 32,000 for the benches, and then we got another 10. So we actually got 42,000. And the cost of that ramp is 50,000 to do that.
So the max we can apply for is 50,000. We're going to designate this as the project that we would like to spend the 50,000. I think that we're obligated to pay more if the numbers were to come in higher than the 50, we would have to make up the difference.
Like we've done in the past, whenever we went higher.
Thank you for clarifying.
But again, all subject to receipt of bids and all of that.
A question, Mayor. If we did not get the full 50,000, that comes in sections for that ramp. It's not all one continuous thing. We might be able to maybe eliminate the top section, you know, when you start.
We have options.
Well, we could.
We have options.
If it's a money problem. If there's no money problem, no. Let's do the whole thing. But we do have some options in the event.
No question.
Okay, yes.
All right. Anything else that we need to do on this part of the hearing? Madam Clerk? That's it?
Okay, good.
All right. At this point, we have comments from the citizens. Matt, anything there? Any comments on how wonderful our audio is tonight?
Get better?
Okay. No raised hands. Then we'll move on to council. We can always come back. Dave, any council comments? Jim, you were saving them.
Mayor, as the weeks come up to the meeting, I have these thoughts in my mind, and I just put them down on paper just so I could try to touch them all. So first, I would like to congratulate Council President Zalone and Councilman Finter on their oath of office. It is an honor to serve and sit with such dedicated, knowledgeable public servants. Just doesn't seem possible that it has been a year since our 2020 reorganizational meeting. The year 2020, the symbol for perfect vision. How many of us dreamt that the year two would be near perfect? Began no different than any other year. Goals were established and prioritized. Plans were formulated. Action was implemented, simple enough. Towards the end of February, we started to hear of this virus, this COVID-19, reaching the North American continent. Two weeks into March, and the local school district was virtual for the remainder of the school year. Nonessential businesses were closed. The ability to find hand sanitizer, paper towels, or toilet tissue was the equivalent of hitting the lottery. America on lockdown. I never heard the word unprecedented used with such frequency. There is no one that was not affected or at least knew of someone that was impacted. Many people felt that at the time, they just had the flu. They had a bad case of bronchitis that would not go away as usual. Then the realization came upon and that they had probably contracted the virus and did not realize it at the time. In October, Lavalet lost a resident. A father and a husband to COVID-19. His son and mine have been in school together since kindergarten. I was devastated by this family's loss, understanding that it could have been any of us and my deepest sympathies to the Christopher Lee family and AJ. In the face of adversity, Lavalet always shows its strength and resiliency, the ability to rebound better than ever. After Sandy proved this, COVID-19 will be no different. The beach season is was coming. The uncertainty of beach quotas, minimum wage increases for badge checkers, and the ability to sell badges in a safe, efficient manner were daunting challenges. Under the guidance of Councilman Staudgill, these challenges were met systematically and head-on. I dare to say that we enjoyed one of the best seasons to date on the beaches. Lavalet Water Utility under the stewardship of Councilman Lamb continues to provide safe drinking water economically. Water tower has been updated. Several wells and filtration plants have been rehabilitated. The remaining well will undergo inspection and rehabilitation tentatively in 2021. This will allow the water utility to continue to serve its customers well into the future. The demands on our electric utility as a consequence of homeowners' behavior during the pandemic have not gotten unnoticed. Our peaks for the summer of 2020 have been some of the highs recorded. At a recent council meeting, I invited the executive director of the New Jersey Public Power Association to address the citizens and the council. The increased level of ownership of electric vehicles, coupled with state mandates to reduce and eliminate combustion vehicles, will only further increase the demands on the utility. There may be some that feel the elimination of combustion vehicles is impossible. But when I see the commercials for the electric version of the venerable Ford Mustang or the F-150 pickup truck, I wonder if we're that far away. As a provider of these utilities, we're obligated to maintain them and keep them functional for future generations. In the same vein as custodians of the public space, it is my belief that we must invest in the maintenance of our recreational facilities as well. All these things bring value to the community. I know we will be proper stewards when the time arises. In closing, I want to say thank you to the Public Safety Liaison, Mrs. Philippione, and to all of the emergency responders in the community, both volunteer and paid. This is a group of people that, when the rest of the world is running away from danger, these people are running into it. I could not be more proud of you. To all of our DPW and utility workers, you truly are essential employees. Our municipal clerk, CFO, electric collector, all our office staff, both downstairs and upstairs, you persevered and adapted to the ever-changing landscape, keeping safety your number one priority. Thank you. And lastly, to our administrator, Mr. Bryce. Every administrator has a different modus operandi. I believe that your prior experience in crisis management set you up well for these past few months. Bob, I feel that we are incredibly fortunate to have had you at the helm during these unprecedented times. From the bottom of my heart, in conjunction with the mayor, I want to say thank you for being the leader of this outstanding team of employees. God bless us all.
Thank you, Jim. Very well said.
Second to motion. That's great.
Mrs. Philippione, any comments for tonight?
I wasn't planning on anything, but it's amazing to me, listening not only to your opening statement, Mayor, but now to Mr. Borowski in particular, at what we did. I think we forget what we did. I think we do it, and we move on to the next project, and nobody's taking bows, and we just move on. And I think I agree with Anita. This is a very amazing group to work with. And I'm really proud to sit up here with all of you. I congratulate Anita and Dave on their return to the council. And let's move forward. There's a lot more to do.
Thank you. Michael, any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate our council president and Councilman Finter. I look forward to serving with you for, you know, the foreseeable future. Let's just not talk three years. You know, it's been a pleasure, and I certainly am glad that you're both up here still. Jim, you forgot one person to mention in that, and that was yourself. For the work that you do with utilities and that, I mean, it's, you know, you keep the town and the people here in your best interest, and you can't ask for anything more than that. So you need to be mentioned in that as well. And this group, and I'll not just echo that, but, you know, COVID picked the fight. And, you know, there's nobody I'd rather go into it than with this group here. And we did do some really good things. I mean, the days just kept going. And the seasons, you know, we took each season. And each time, you know, you look at the setbacks. But we had many successes. For everything that happened, there were quite a number of successes. I mean, and you pointed them all out. It was, we had a good year. And you can only, you know, think about how, you know, as this goes away, the base that we've established and for many more successes. So I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. Bob?
I just wanted to congratulate Dave and Anita for starting another three years. It's great to have you on council here. And it's good to see that 2020 is in our past and hopefully 2021 is going to be a lot brighter, especially with this vaccine. And hopefully, we'll have a little herd immunity for the future. So looking forward to it.
Anita?
I have to especially thank our EMTs.
Get closer to that mic.
Our EMTs, our police, the people that have to get there first, the front line. It's really, it's really hard. And us up here, we make decisions. We let people know what we want to do. And you guys, Public Works and Bob Rice and you guys out there, you do all the work. We just make the decisions. And it's a lot of work, but you follow us, and you follow exactly what we would like you to do and always ask and always talk to us about it. And that's a great thing. I want to congratulate the Little Paper for having such a nice... They have boxes out there now. They used to just give them out in the stores. Now they have little special boxes that you can take them as you walk around the streets like the other companies do. So I think that's great. And there's so much in there. And there's so much in there, it's really a great thing, especially for people who are, for us, maybe not quite as much, but for visitors, it's wonderful. And the pickleball people are anxious to help financially, any way we can do it, and I sent it to some of you, but I was reading in the newspaper about how Monmouth County has given away $2.6 million in grants, open space grants, to their towns in Monmouth County. And so, I'm after the county, now Ocean County, to get some kind of a program going like that and help us with our open space. Every year, they ask us for tennis, for the tennis courts, for the pickleball courts, to come over and teach here. Great, we love doing that. We would never say no to you, but maybe you can help us out with repairing our pickleball courts and our tennis courts. And I know that people would like to. They sent a letter, they sent it to you, and I got a copy of it. They would like to help us out, too. And by the way, I forgot to mention before that I've attended three or four meetings already, three or four meetings already on the Ocean County CDBG. They have Zoom meetings, and it's important to get there and attend and listen and talk and so that we can get as much money as we can. We did well two years ago, and we're going to do well this year, I promise. I will work very hard on it.
I know that you will, Anita.
Yes, I will.
Persistence is your greatest virtue.
Thank you.
Mr. Bryce?
Just to let you know, I'm getting comments from some people that I've asked to monitor for us tonight. They're saying that the audio is very good out there.
Good.
I'm hoping that somebody actually makes a comment, so we could judge to make sure that that feature is working good. We'll see if one of those come in within the next minute or so. A couple of things I'd like to just put out there as far as what's coming up. To clarify, with the Verizon application, we weighed the matter with our attorney, and taking into everything that we had, we received many letters from people who wanted an in-person meeting. Because of the current situation we're in, the current executive orders, and weighing that in with what we have as far as size of facilities and the safety of the public, we are going ahead with the virtual meeting. It was weighed again and determined that because we have this feature working now, we will be able to get just as much comment from the public as if we had a live meeting. So, this feature, again, is working good, God willing, and it'll keep working good. And Wednesday's meeting of the Planning Board will be Wednesday, the 6th, is coming Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. All the instructions will be on the Borough webpage on how to go ahead and link into the Zoom, and people will be able to do that. Verizon will be remote as well, their representatives, so they will be available for comment and questions. That hearing, for lack of better terms, or Planning Board meeting, is meant to have the Planning Board members review the application in the context of conformance with our ordinance. So, all the items that we have in our ordinance, and we have a link to the ordinance on our website, all those items that are in that ordinance, the requirements for Verizon, that is what the Planning Board will be looking into. The Planning Board will then make one of three decisions. They'll either deny it, they'll approve it, or they'll approve it with conditions. And then those recommendations are sent to the Town Council. So, when the Council meets on Tuesday, the 19th, again, that's a Tuesday meeting for the Council on the 19th, due to a holiday the day before at 7:00 p.m., there will also be a Zoom meeting, and the Town Council will then weigh all aspects of that application. I think I covered everything with respect to that. If anybody has questions, again, go to our Borough website. We have several pieces of information on there. We have a piece from the New Jersey League of Municipalities detailing what a municipality can actually do in terms of reviewing these applications. We also have something that Verizon sent us, their presentation, informational presentation, if you would, and that is from Verizon. So, that's all on the website as well. We are planning to have the applications on there, but they are very, very voluminous. So, we do plan on, at least by the Borough Council meeting, having those applications on there for people to review. That's it as far as that particular subject goes. I just want to overall now speak. Time flies. I'm actually going into my fourth year here now, and it promises to be a very busy year. You touched on it, Mayor, as far as what we have out there, and a very heavy agenda, but we look forward to it, because a lot of good things are going to be accomplished. Again, great group of people here, and look forward to getting everything accomplished.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bryce. These virtual meetings are not by any means our preferred method of conducting business here. We actually enjoyed having the audience here and some of the comments from the members of the audience, their participation was enlightening. We look forward to 2021, hopefully, being able to welcome you back into this meeting room. Unfortunately, after the advice of Council, the Verizon application meeting, it's thought best, particularly with the enhancements of the audio here on the Zoom application, that the best way is going to be virtual. Again, not our favorite way of doing things, but I think it's a necessity for this one, and we keep looking for ways to enhance this experience, but hope that the entire process is eliminated through a decree from the Governor. We are, again, allowed to have public meetings. We look forward to that day. I enjoy working every member of this Council here. Everybody does a great job in their departments, and I look forward to a great 2021. So, if there are no hands visible?
No hands.
Oh, my God.
One hand.
One? Say something?
Yeah, Mike, go ahead. Anita wanted to say something.
I just want to let people know, I'll be calling the stout bus company, because apparently, our wonderful Ocean Ride Bus sometimes stops and parks on Bay Boulevard, where it's no parking, and stays there and waits until the hour to go pick up people on President Avenue. So, I am calling stout bus tomorrow to make sure that doesn't happen. They have to park down. We told them to park down by the tennis courts.
In order to keep his rounds timely, he needs to kill some time. Anything, Matt?
Yes, Mr. George. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of Council. Just raising my hand simply to assist Mr. Bryce and Matt in the sound check, but also to say thank you for the appointment, and we look forward to working with the Mayor and Council going into our 16th year. Okay, I'll try again. I raised my hand to help with the sound check as requested, but also to thank the Mayor and Council for the appointment again and work for you going into our 16th year with the Borough of Lavallette. It's been a pleasure, and I look forward to more of it during the coming year, and hopefully, we, as the Mayor says, we reach a point where we can go back to our public meeting. I, myself, have gotten messages from some of your regular appearances. It's always a pleasure to see old friends and old faces. Thank you.
Well, Phil, we appreciate your work, especially with the liquor license controversy in the south end of town this year. You did a great job there, and as always, you do a great job with all of our legal issues. Appreciate all your work. Look forward to another year, your 16th.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. If there are no more comments or no more hands raised, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. All in favor?